Okay, good evening. This is an open meeting of the Newbury Town Library Board of Trustees. It's being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth through the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law. They have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public parties are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public parties to meet entirely remotely, as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such public participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comments if there are any. For this meeting of the Newbury Town Library Board of Trustees, we are convening by telephone conference, possibly for Terry, and by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the agenda. So, that's it. Now, maybe getting close to the end of that, so we may read it at a public meetings anyway, just for that. All right, the agenda. What are the approval of the minutes for our last meeting?
So, yep, so I've got minutes from March and April.
Oh, okay.
To read. And these were taken mostly by Dick. Thank you, Dick Raven.
You're welcome.
Meeting called to order at 9:35 a.m. in attendance. Dick, Terry, Terri, Leters, Alex Burke, Dick Raven, Jean Ackley, Erin. And I always pronounce that wrong, so I'm just gonna skip it. Margaret Grimes arrived at 10:09 a.m. Dick Raven noted that, so I included that. Thank you for noting my tardiness. The teacher takes notes. Okay. Jean presented her director's report. The board and library staff discussed statistics focusing on the large uptick in Facebook group membership. They also discussed adult and children's programming, noting the challenges inherent in Zoom events. The board and library staff discussed how lessons learned during the pandemic will improve library function post-lockdown. They also discussed the library's plan for a summer outdoor escape room focusing on 17th century Newbury history. The board voted unanimously to approve the minutes of the trustees' meeting of February 26, 2021. The next meeting will be April 16, 2021, at 9:30 a.m. The meeting adjourned at 10:21 a.m., and then I have a list of documents.
Okay. Here is there a motion? Motion made and seconded to accept the minutes as read. All in favor? And I, okay, unanimous, that's actual.
Great. Okay, hold on. I'm looking for my other ones who are there. And these, I have no part in these at all, because I am noted as absent, which I was. Thank you, Dick Raven, for taking these. Everybody else was there. And we adjourned at 9:31 a.m., or you adjourned, I should say. Trustees baved reading, accepting of last-minute meetings because the secretary was absent. So it's twice noted that I was absent. Thank you.
Better way to do it, let me know.
I'm just teasing you. Jean presented her director's report. Trustees and staff discussed NTL statistics, budget staffing, facility issues, and programming. The trustees and staff discussed the proposed NTL reopening schedule for May 4. By unanimous vote, the trustees approved a new interim library schedule, which will offer 9 a.m. to 5 p.m. Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and 11 a.m. to 7 p.m. Wednesdays. Saturday hours until summer recess will be 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. Curbside pickup will be available Wednesday and Friday. How in the world do people keep that straight? The next, the next meeting will be Wednesday, May 26, at 5 p.m. The meeting adjourned, and I actually inserted that, because you did not know that at the time. So I took, I took the liberty of writing that in. Meeting adjourned at 10:50 a.m., then a list of documents.
Okay. The only change I would make to that was put your insertion. Could you make it 5:30?
Oh, yes, because I showed up at 5 p.m. this evening. And realized that I looked carefully at the agenda. Wait, thank you, wait a minute.
That's okay.
I'll fix it.
I'm the one that, you know, came in an hour late on one of the meetings too, so.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Okay, we have a.
I'll make the change.
Motion to accept the meetings as Brad presented and amended. All of the above. Motion made and seconded. Okay, all in favor? Unanimous.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret. Thank you, Dick.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
All right, next. Reopening update, Jean.
Well, I got the budgets and the spreadsheets. Did I not put that on the agenda?
Oh, you got budget after as number three, FY budget, FY 22 budget.
Sorry, the director's report and everything is, should be on there, and I did not get that on there. I apologize.
Okay, so what do you want to do first?
I think if it's okay, I will quickly go over the budget. I'm not gonna do as much as, as I originally intended. I explained why. I also wanted to let you know that Katie Burke is going to pop in at 5:45, because she'd like to be in on the discussion about reopening the children's room. So Erin was gonna say something very quickly about the statistics, and then I can go. No, you, okay.
It's not important.
Okay.
Yeah, it's written on the sheet, anyway.
Okay. And, you know, my, my take is that everything's still up in the air in terms of statistics. They're all over the place. But now that we're getting back to normal, they'll be more important than ever. So budget-wise, like I said, there's really not a whole lot I can do in May for either budget, FY 21 or FY 22, because I don't have everything, I don't have the year-end stuff for FY 21. And that affects my being able to say a whole lot about how FY 21 was. And it also affects my ability to say, this is what we should probably do in FY 22, because I don't have the full picture. So I've kind of, especially since there's things to consider about and to discuss about reopening. The FY 22 budget discussion, I think, can wait. I did send out the budget for FY 22. It's all pretty self-evident. 90% of the year has passed. We're at 85% for the total municipal budget. I think we're on a good path to spend that $13,742 that you see in there. I've ordered two new computers for public workstations. And between materials and other things, I think we're gonna spend that money nicely. I update, the only other thing of importance is I updated the Randall Spendable Fund. I got all the balances from the town accountant. And I moved the $16,797 in the Randall Spendable into the balance, because that really is where it should be. I had been leaving that out of there and just focusing on what we were budgeting, but I think it should be in the balance. So that brings us to about $90,000 in non-municipal funding. Does that make sense? Anybody have questions? Okay. And like I said, I'll have a much more thorough summary in June. When, as I told Dick, I think we are still going to be meeting on Zoom, because at the meeting the other day, the towns seemed to be shooting for July 5, July 1 for boards to meet in person. I think because of the, the emergency restrictions being lifted on June 15. So that was how it appeared at that meeting. I can quickly go through the, the budget, I mean, the director's report, and I'll keep my eye out to see if Katie's trying to get into the meeting. The AC, I don't think I've, I don't think I've been there a year. When the AC comes on, when it gets hot, and the heat comes on when it gets cold. It just doesn't happen. I kind of had high expectations this year, though. I don't know why. But currently, the mechanical guy is blaming the computer guy, and the computer guy is blaming the mechanical guys. So it was pretty hot in there today. So that's about all I can say. I think Fred Doherty is supposed to come back tomorrow. And Monkey with the, the computers, he thought, or he determined that the condenser outside my office, which does the main library, had not been turned on. I'm not certain there had been spring maintenance done on that. I'm really not sure where any of that is, and I really don't get told much anymore. Which is, I kind of like on some levels, because then I feel like it's more in James' hands, and, you know, there's not as much that falls on me.
Has James been made aware?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And he, you know, when he, he told me that Steve was coming Monday, but then, of course, I didn't find out if he did. So then I had to contact James to see if Steve did in fact come. And then James wanted me to call Fred, and I asked him, I said, I just think it's much more efficient if, if you're the intermediary, rather than back and forth, back and forth. So, you know, more to discuss on that, but I guess somebody told me it's supposed to be a high of 58 tomorrow. So I guess we won't have this issue.
Oh, my goodness.
Eight? It's not somebody told me, but I wonder if that was the law.
That's wrong. It's supposed to be 78.
Yeah, it must have been the law.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Either way, I think we'll be comfortable tomorrow.
Well, I, you know, anyway, I think you've got to get a schedule of when they're gonna focus on this, because over the next month or so, you know, in the next couple of weeks, things are gonna change. Where are you gonna need upper ventilation and air conditioning?
Yep.
So what time is Fred coming?
Do you know, Erin? I don't think we've had a set time.
It's when he gets there. He, at that time, when I spoke to him the other day, which might have been yesterday, it just seems like a long time ago. He was only coming to check on the computer representation of the temperature in the meeting room, which said it was 27 degrees. It wasn't. So I don't know what his, if you have an update on what he's planning tomorrow, but he was just really gonna be swinging by.
Oh, so.
And he, his.
Who's gonna, who's gonna reassure us that the AC is working?
Right. It seems like we need to confirm if we've had our spring maintenance and if everything's been turned on mechanically. Hi, Katie.
Which James said that Steve did what he needed to do. That was.
So then the condenser should be on.
Yes.
But it's not.
But it's not.
Right. And the set points are all correct in the online, you know, management system for the HVAC and all of that, so.
Yes, yeah, but the, the meeting room is supposed to be at 27 degrees.
And.
So something's. Yeah, I hope it's not 27 degrees today. So, all right.
Same old, same old.
So maybe we, I'll send James an email, kind of bug him a little bit.
That would be great.
Want to know what, want to know what's going on with this. When is it gonna get resolved? Understand that there's always issues when you start up systems, but when is it gonna be resolved? This has been going on for how long?
Um, for, well, a couple of weeks. I mean, it just, you know, it didn't start up. We had heat, a heat wave or heat spell, what, two weeks ago, and nothing then either.
Okay, so over, so in two weeks, we haven't resolved or identified the issue?
No.
All right. All right.
All right, so I'll just, I'll breeze on through the, the director's report, and then we will let Ms. Katie have the floor at some point. All right, managers' meeting was held this past Monday. I think I'll just table all the reopening stuff until we get to that on the agenda, if that's okay. Programming, Katie is going full throttle with programs in June, sort of throwing everything up in the air and seeing where things land. Rather than rattle them all off, I included the link to the children's newsletter below. So hopefully you all did your homework and, and looked at that. And it's, you know, some of this is already not, you know, dated because of what happened at the managers' meeting. But for all, for adults, outdoor yoga will be once a month. The main session did have to be canceled due to the weather. And yoga for back hair will be virtual at 6:30. I think that will continue, because that's an evening program, and it would be pretty buggy, I think, on the library lawn, too. Try and do that in the evenings. The writer's workshop was supposed to be virtual. I'm gonna leave it up to the instructor for her to decide what she wants to do. This for staff, this is Marcia's last week, and we're very sorry to lose her at CIRC, but I don't have to say sorry to see her go, because she will be back a week from Tuesday, volunteering with, weekly with her son Ben. So that's great. And I don't think we'll even have to tell Marcia what to do, because she'll, she'll look around and she'll know it needs to get done.
She told me today.
Training needed.
Which she's gonna do.
Yeah, good. Needless to say, this has softened the blow of her retiring, both for her and for us. We have hired Emma Cashman to fill Marcia's position. Emma starts on Tuesday, so we're literally throwing the baby in the pool. She's a recent graduate of the University of Vermont, having majored in history and theater history. Emma lives in Byfield and used to volunteer here when she was younger. She's considering a career in libraries and is super eager to learn, so that will be great. She'll be a great addition to the staff. We're really excited. Catherine Souplatt has taken the helm at CIRC extremely competently. She has lots of good ideas and is looking forward to actually seeing people in the building, which she has never seen. Except us. So we also couldn't wait to invite our volunteers back. Erin sent off a great, fun welcoming email to them today. I did that one out today, right, Erin?
Yep.
Yeah. Um, when we see them at curbside, they're all begging to, to come back in the building, so that should be good. The Friends had their most successful plant sale on Saturday. The profit was, we heard today, was actually about $3,700, so that was their best.
Oh, good for them.
Yeah, that was just fantastic, and it was over in like two hours.
Yeah, get there early or go without.
Yeah, it was crazy.
Definitely.
So that's the director's report, and I sent out, I did send out that kind of compilation of comments that were coming in from directors today, as well as the, the director from Carlisle, who sent the, the message that their town council had sent out, which I thought was really helpful. And I did all that really because I was quite blown away at the managers' meeting on Monday, where we basically were told no requirements whatsoever, no masks, no distancing, no capacity limits, no nothing. And I asked if we could encourage, still encourage mask-wearing from people who were non, not vaccinated, including children. And I was told we can't even encourage that, because we are a municipal building. So I did say, you know, I know my children's librarian is going to be concerned, as am I, about children in the building unmasked, and leaving it up to the parents, which basically Tracy said, you know, we're, we're on the honor system, and that's very true in all of our lives, I think. But, you know, we're a library, as Erin says, we're supposed to provide legitimate, legitimate information for people. You know, they're supposed to, we're supposed to be a trusted resource of, of the, what the professionals and guidance is. And it just seems odd to us to not even be able to really put up an advisory, especially considering this, what the CDC is doing for mask-wearing. So having said that, and saying that basically this, you know, this, we were told we can do all indoor programming. We can book the community room. It's basically all bets are off and everything back to normal. So we've had, we've been having discussions as a staff. I did send off an email to Chief Lucy today, asking if he had gotten any clarification on childrens, because they did say they would get back to me on that. I did not hear back. So I really, you know, was hoping for a constructive discussion here with the trustees. And Ms. Katie asked to be part of that, and I knew she'd be a good addition, so.
John, John did respond to.
Oh, maybe on my way home?
At 4:10.
4:10? I didn't, I was checking email. I did not get that.
I didn't get it either.
I don't.
Well, he, he just CC'd Tracy and me. I'm, I'm like, because I just opened it just as we went online, I've on to Zoom. Let me forward it, let me forward it to everybody.
Can I just ask a question, Jean? So this, who made this decision? Was there a vote of our board of select people who made this decision?
No, it was the Newbury, it's the Newbury COVID Command Team, so that's Chief Lucy, Chief of Police, Board of Health.
Okay.
And Tracy Blais, Town Administrator. And, you know, I'm not faulting anybody necessarily, because the, the messaging is changing by the hour, basically.
Right.
But I just didn't feel like a lot of thought was given to the library. The library is something totally separate from Town Hall. And, you know, the fact that we have, you know, could have large numbers of children unmasked and undistanced, along with unvaccinated, unmasked adults. And, you know, they, they appreciated what I was saying and said they were trying to get clarification. But then I did, I wrote earlier today, asking for clarification for this meeting, and apparently the email did not come to me.
No, it was, it was addressed to you, Jean.
Well, I don't have it.
Did you just forward it?
We're doing that right now.
Okay. Um.
It should be on its way through cyberspace, and with my skill set, we should get it tomorrow.
Oh, no, I see it. I got it.
Oh, okay.
I wonder. I consider the, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I wonder if it went into my, here we go. Yeah, I didn't get it, it didn't, it might have got into my junk mail, though I don't know why that would have happened. So, but let's see what he said.
That's, that, it's not considered school.
I don't, I don't have.
Well, it looks like we can't require it, but the question really is, can we have flyers up saying, please remember that significant populations of the library are unvaccinated. So, you know, CDC recommends that you still wear a mask, or, you know what I mean, or something like that, because it's not like Town Hall where people put a pay-bill. They come and come out of the library, stay.
I think, with the CDC regulation is what, you don't need to wear a mask if you've been vaccinated. And on the honor system, if you haven't been vaccinated, the expectation is that you're gonna wear a mask.
Right.
But we can't tell people that?
No.
Well, it, we were told no advisory. I mean, other libraries are, but I don't have.
Yeah, that, that doesn't work.
Somebody read that email to me, because it's not, I can't access the email. I see that you sent it to me, but it's not coming through.
Oh, okay.
I'll forward it to you, Jean.
Well, I'm, I hope I'll be able to read it then, but I mean, I've got.
Try it again, read it. Yeah. Are you forwarding it, Margaret?
Yeah, I'm doing it right now.
Katie, I, I don't have your email, so I haven't been able to forward it to you. So if Erin, Jean can send it to Katie, that would be.
I'll send it to you, Katie, right now.
I just sent it to you, Jean.
Thank you.
So it says there, there's no mandate for wearing masks after May 29.
Right.
Unversely, there is no mandate that says you can't, okay? Listen, the library events do not fall into the category of K through 12 school category. Therefore, if parents choose to have their children wearing masks, that's their prerogative. Otherwise, our position is masks are optional. If your employees choose to wear a mask, again, that will be their prerogative. Guidance and directives of the State Department of Public Health has been the basis of a consistent and uniform response to this situation. As such, we feel it is best to continue to adjust our parameters according to our interpretations of these guidelines. Something has changed at the state level that affects the current position on this matter. We will be sure to notify you. I hope this helps. It doesn't, but that's okay.
Only embellishments.
Comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
These are not events that are happening at the library. It's what the library does. It's like a school when the kids, ah, sorry.
What was?
That was a, a yellow jacket that's in my kitchen.
Oh, this Zooming is great.
Entertaining the folks is not a requirement at the meeting, Margaret.
Sorry. Hey, it's been a while. I haven't seen you guys in a while. But I do, when I try and kill it while I'm talking to you, before it comes back. But anyway. So, all right, I just got it.
Congratulations. Nice going.
So I, I completely disagree with that interpretation. And I am a teacher in a public school, and if I were a children's librarian, working, or, or anyone in the library for that matter, and I had loads of kids coming in without masks, I would not be comfortable. And I think that's wrong. So.
Katie.
That's my vote.
Okay, Katie.
As a parent of children who are not old enough to get vaccinated, I have an issue. Because if my kids are in the stacks, you know, even if they're wearing a mask, if my kids are in the stacks, you know, looking at books, and then an adult comes in who's not wearing a mask, who says, oh, it's just a cough, I'm fine. And then three days later, they end up COVID-positive, my kids have the possibility of being infected, even though they're wearing masks, because masks don't necessarily protect them, it protects the person that they could be coughing on.
Right.
So that, that's my issue. I just, you know, my June programs are either virtual or outside, because I've become rather attached to the children of Newbury. And I don't want to run the risk of any of them getting sick. And, no offense, but we have patrons who are gonna say, vaccinated, I'm vaccinated, and wearing masks. And now with the new, with the new information that's coming out, we don't have to tell people if we've tested positive. You know, there's no more contact tracing. And I picked, came across what I consider to be a wonderful article yesterday from the New York Times. They did an unofficial poll of epidemiologists and pediatricians and various other medical professionals, and said, okay, you've got kids under the age of, what are you gonna, you know, what do you think is safe for them to do? And 75% of them said indoor events, you know, small spaces, large groups, not gonna happen. Masks or no masks, because it's still a Petri dish. And, and that's, my biggest concern is, I don't want the, I don't want the children to get sick. And I don't want it to come back to, well, the Newbury Town Library, you know, is letting unmasked adults hang out with children in the children's room, and that's how the kids are getting sick. You know, I don't, I, I told this to Jean, you know, earlier in, in the years, we were thinking about what to do this summer. You know, my biggest concern is that we're gonna be a super-spreeder. And, you know, I'm hopeful that now that, you know, the vaccine's out there, that won't be an issue. But children ages 2 to 12 are, or 2 to 11, rather, aren't eligible to get the vaccine until September at the earliest. So how many kids are gonna get sick over the summer, because libraries are holding indoor events where nobody has to wear a mask?
Thank you, Katie. I think, I think kind of what this comes down to is whether the trustees of the library have the authority to make some of their own decisions regarding this. That town council comment that I sent from the director in Carlisle, you know, their town council said, just like an industry, the library can make some regulations. They can't mandate masks, but they can, Andover is advising. They can't mandate masks, but they can, Andover is advising, um, you know, they're putting up a sign, we advise the wearing of masks.
So Jean, just interrupted.
Yep.
The town has said we can't even put up signs to advise people?
Yes, to encourage them. The word I used was encourage. Um, and that was the response. Um. So I realize it's, it's confusing, but you know, I think, I think maybe the cleanest way to go about this would be for, for the trustees to, to weigh in on very simple things. We're not asking for, you know, masking of everybody that comes in the building. We, and we would like to be able to put the advisory up for people that who are unmasked. Um, we can't, we know we can't enforce it, but we could put up an advisory. And to limit capacity in the children's room. That, you know, that to me, if the trustees vote that that's something that they would like to enforce at their building, I think we could then approach the town and see where we get.
I'm not, I'm not sure we have the authority. Especially if the town has established a town-wide policy. Uh, the library is still, uh, an agency and a department of the town of Newbury. Um, it's not separate. Now having its own rules and regulations in terms of policy of the town. So prior to doing that, that would have something that would have to take place, an interaction with the town would have to take place before we put up any signs. At least that's my opinion.
Did you read, did you read the interpretation, though, from the Carlyle Town Council?
Yeah, it, it does, you know, that's wonderful. That's, that's Carlyle's Town Council.
But that's, that was that Town Council's interpretation.
Understood.
The guidance.
All right, Jean.
Our Town Council's interpretation, if we, I don't know who the Town Council, because they signed off on, on the policy. And our Town Council's, uh, and, you know, the law gets interpreted all the time. And our town has interpreted it in this very particular way.
I don't know if the Town Council is involved, though.
Right. What, and where is the policy? What, I want to see the policy. Do we have it? And that's why, reading that email about Carlyle, this person refers to the Town Administration. That's why I was wondering, well, who actually made this decision? And, and thank you, you clarified that, Jean, but.
Yeah, I mean, that was why I sent it, was because of the interpretation of the same language. You know, the, all the, all the towns are reading the same language from the DPH. But that was how it was interpreted there. And as you said, there's no, there's no policy, you know. If, it seems to me if the trustees don't, you know, speak up, then we are in a position where we just basically do whatever the town says. I, I feel there can be a conversation. Maybe they'll still feel, maybe Tracy will determine that they have the power to override the trustees. But I, I feel the trustees should have a voice in this.
Now, and I, and just to be, you know, I think we have to understand what our role is. This is, this is, in my interpretation, mine only, is that we don't have the authority to do it if the town policy has been created for all town functions, all town operations. The prerogative is not us. I'm not saying that we shouldn't have signs. I think the sign should be up saying that if you've been vaccinated, you don't need a mask. If you haven't been vaccinated, I thought that was the CDC recommendation, position. So why can't we post the CDC requirements?
Well, that's just it. So that would be a question for the trustees to ask Chief Lucy.
So.
Now, of, of, of the three people you mentioned on the, on that board, that COVID board, who is the best one for us to have a conversation with?
Um, I would say probably Chief Lucy, but I think it'd be better if, if you at least got Tracy, the Town Administrator, on.
Who represents the Board of Health, Jean?
Uh, Deb Howard. So ideally, she should be there as well.
My suggestion about how to handle this is to figure out who among us should talk to, whoever should be talked to, and have a conversation before we take a vote. Because then we can have a, an emergency meeting of the Board of Trustees. If there is agreement in the town, allow the library to make some separate version of their rules. I, you know, because I don't think simply taking a vote and, you know, kind of putting, pressing it to the town's face is going to do wonders for the library.
Yeah.
There are, you know, twice now, you know, or three times, once in the meeting, once in the first email, and once in the email that Dick just submitted, giving you a very clear picture of what they want you to do, what they want us to do. And so the only way we can change that is by trying to talk some sense into them. Um, I, you know, I feel for you, Katie, and I feel very badly for you. And I do think that any parent would be foolish to bring their kids to the library until things are safer for them. I, you know, I frankly do.
Good, Katie.
But, but I, I will, in response to that, Dick, I will say that the parents are desperate to find things to do with their kids. And pre-COVID, I could easily have fifty people at a storytime on a Wednesday morning at ten thirty. So those, and those are the numbers that, you know, I could potentially get this summer just with parents and caregivers wanting to find something to do with their kid.
In an air-conditioned building, building.
Yeah, in an air-conditioned building. And, and I've, I've gone on record numerous times saying, I hate being outside. I hate being hot. I hate sweating. I hate being cold, but I will do storytime outside all summer if necessary. Because that's.
Let me just ask. Just to frame the, the image here. You envision people coming into the library all masked? Is that what you're envisioning?
No, what I would, what I would really like would just be a sign as you come into the children's room that says, for the safety and well-being of our unvaccinated children, please wear a mask in the children's room. And then, and, and not have it be, you know, I've, I've given a lot of, a lot of thought over this over the last twenty-four hours. You know, I don't, I, I don't want to stand at the, at the door to children's and be the mask Nazi and say, you have to wear a mask. But, you know, I will, I, you know, I will say, if you don't have a mask on, is, you know, is there something in particular that I can get for you? You know, we've got a lot of, of children here under the age of, you know, whatever, that can't be vaccinated. Is there something that I can get for you? You know, or are you just wanting to browse? Yeah, because I, I think that, you know.
Does you, because obviously people, if, if you've been vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask, so. People will be coming into the library, uh, unmasked. If they're wandering around and, you know, I don't know, if they're coming in with a child, that's a different story. I mean, you don't have adults wandering and browsing around in the, in the children's area, do you, without kids?
Occasionally, I do, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I guess if you're looking for something for your child or grandchild or something, I guess you.
I, I've done it when my grandkids are coming to stay.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Yeah. Yeah, okay. So, all right.
I, I do think it's a worth, a worthy conversation here, but I don't know, I, I don't think it gets us far to take a contrary vote and see what happens.
Absolutely.
I think that, that's, you know, throwing a grenade, and I'd rather have a conversation first and talk about the very particular problems, not from the point of view of, of you who has to struggle with Town, Eugene, who has to struggle with Town Hall all the time. But, you know, and I'm happy to be on a committee of two, Dick, or whoever, to have a conversation. But I think that's the best way to achieve it, if it's achievable. And it's not clear that it is. All we can do is try to, try to get them to smarten up. But they, they, you know, they may not.
Erin.
So this has come up, um, with the MBLC and Mass, the state of Massachusetts in the past, as far as Charlie Baker's legislation about COVID and libraries being continuously left out of the mix. And I think that's because public libraries are how you imagine it, how you use it. So if you're not a, a library user, or if you're a person who doesn't have children, you're thinking, oh, it's just a place where I go, I grab my books and I leave. You're, you're not maybe realizing, and this is on a state level, um, that people are coming here and hanging out. They stay for hours. Um, and there's no time limits anymore. Um, so people can stay, will be able to stay for hours when we reopen. And so I'm hopeful that we'll get some direction from the MBLC about all of this, about how to deal with, with town governments. But it's been an education process for the state. Never mind all of our little towns to try to say, wait, wait, look at the library. It's not the same as Town Hall's building. Yes, it's different from a school, but it's really somewhere in the middle. And it needs its own set of guidelines with them.
That's true. And I think the, uh, Katie, tell me if I'm wrong, but I think the guidelines for, um, childcare, the state DPH guidelines for, for childcare is masks on. Is that correct?
Uh, as, as far as I, at, at schools, um, do they have to have masks? And their desks have been moved to three feet apart. Uh, but they are outside several times a day, um, for mask breaks as well as snack and lunch. So that anytime they are without a mask, they should be outside. Or out, without a mask for any long period of time.
Yeah, so, you know, again, just to, to, I, if I said vote, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't mean that that was what I was hoping for here. I really was hoping for a conversation, um, from the trustees, you know, and not me. Um, and.
And I probably made that worse by saying, that's my vote, which I didn't mean. I just said, I'm, I should say, that's my opinion.
We're having a discussion.
Yeah, and, you know, Margaret, if you had the time, I think your voice as a public teacher would be really helpful here, too. You know, ju- just like, just like I said, a conversation, it could be, it can be on Zoom. Um, you know, I'm really not trying to create a melodrama here, but you know, unfortunately, I always am in the position of where I see that other towns are doing things differently and I.
Jean, can't always be bringing that up. That, you know, that just rankles. You, when you mentioned, this is what another town is doing. They, they're going to tell you, it's Newbury. This is the way we do.
Well, and that's.
We just, we, we just kind of keep saying that. I understand that other places, other library, other libraries have been open for, for the last two to three months. Our friends in Bill Ricker have been going in and out of the library for the last two months. Okay, that's the town of Bill Ricker made that decision.
And, and none of us who live in Newbury would like to have the town of Carlyle's tax rate. So, you know, every town, every town plays their, you know, and, and what happens is that a lot of people who move to places like Carlyle who pay high taxes and afford to demand a certain level of professionalism in their, in their institution. That may not, you know, we're, this is more of a farmer farming community. So you don't get that level as much as we would like to. We do the best we can within our limits, but there are limits.
I, I just feel it's a, it's a.
It's a challenge to everybody to see that the, that, that our town, you know, rarely understands exactly the specifics of what libraries require, in this instance, than the others.
Right, and that's, I, that's where I feel my, you know, what I can contribute is perspective, you know. I, I feel like sometimes decisions are made in a vacuum. And I feel more, you know, I feel closer to the other libraries, quite frankly, than I do to the town. And that's, you know.
But, yeah, I wish, I wish it were a winning argument here in town, but I've never seen it happen.
I'm just curious, Jean, it wasn't included in your email, but what is Raleigh doing?
Raleigh has been open since September. So, and I, I don't know if they're limiting their children's room. There are quite a few libraries that are still going to limit capacity in their children, children's room, and are going to put up signs very gently saying, we would appreciate wearing masks.
So is, is, are there issues among, in, in, in the adult section of the library that you also are concerned about? Or is it exclusively within this one instance from the children's?
It, it's pretty much just the children's room. You know, just at what Katie said, that wording is perfect. A sign in the door that says that.
And the reason why, I, I, I think I, I should just say that right now you're getting a very muted statement from me, because I, I'm, this is something that I'm very passionate about. Because children under the age of twelve don't have a choice. Their parents don't have a choice. And they, kids right now, they've been doing this for fifteen months. We think that, you know, we're going a little crazy. Margaret, I'm sure that you can attest that, you know, the kids are batty with, I need to do something that doesn't include a screen. But I can't, you know, going outside, going to see my friends, it's not necessarily safe. You know, the only reason why my children are able to play with our neighbors is because I know that their parents have been vaccinated. So it's, you know, their, their worlds have gotten very small over the last fifteen months. I want them to be able to come back into the, but I need to be safe for them. And, you know, they're, these are kids that don't, they don't necessarily fully understand what's going on, even after, even though we've been doing this for fifteen months. And I think that our, you know, our commitment to the town, to the community needs to be one of safety for their health. And safety for our children.
Yeah. Guidance all along was all about safety for our patrons. And now, all of a sudden, we're being told we're not supposed to advocate for their safety anymore. And I don't get it.
I think it comes down to educating the COVID Task Force and Town Management on how the library operates and, and how different it is, because they don't, my feeling is like they, they just maybe don't know. You know, they, they, I haven't seen them in the library to like see what is it like when Katie has fifty kids for storytime? Or, you know, like, I'm thinking that they are, they just, I, we just need to tell them, look, did you know that this is how things happen? And I feel like they've got to see.
And if they want to use the word, the, the verbiage of an event, then every storytime is an event. But I'm, I'm, and I'm, like I said, I'm perfectly fine with doing those outside until, you know, things fall where they may. My concern is the, the day-to-day operation of having unmasked adults in the children's room with children. And because, you know, there's, you know, there's limited ventilation. Granted, we've got those great ceilings and we've got airflow. We don't have wonderful AC in the children's room, but that's another issue. But it's, you know, it's, it there's too many opportunities for a, an adult to pass COVID on to a child, or for a child to simply be a carrier and pass it on to an unvaccinated adult. If you want to look at it that way as well.
Katie, you feel okay about writing a handful of bullet points that we can?
Did you say, oh, Katie? Did you say Katie? Can't hear.
Since you're really in the middle of this, I, I, unless, unless, Jean, forgive me, unless you think you want to do it or somebody else. But I think having a hand, having bullet points that we, that whoever's talking to town can have in front of them would be very useful. And particularly from those right in the middle of it.
Sure, I'm, I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
And as far as a sign goes, it could be as simple as something that says, please keep our kids safe. Um, and, and wear a mask. It could be just a simple. You know.
I understand that, but the issue is that the town doesn't, has told us, we are not allowed to advise anyone to wear a mask or to limit access to any place for the unmasked. And so this is what we're trying to change for the children's room. And so you have to have a good argument to explain why.
Well, one argument would be maybe at flu season, we do post flyers and we get information that we're able to put on display during flu season about precautions to take and things like that. So I, I'm confused about why we're not able to simply quote the CDC guidelines or, you know, even do that.
Because of politics.
Exactly.
Is there any discussion?
Political.
Politicized, uh, argument away from facts and about who you stand for, who you stand with. And so the town is doing what it can, and it's, you know, limited wisdom to tamp down the politics and not allow people to get into fights about masks. So I understand where they're coming from. It's just not appropriate in the circumstance.
Right. Or you could also interpret that as the town asserting its political views.
That they very well may.
It's not depoliticizing it. It's politicizing it, if you ask me.
Very well may, but the only, the only argument we have is logic and, and wisdom and experience, and we can bring that to bear. You know, but I don't think simply asserting this is our, we've, you know, we've now asserted this is the library policy will get us far.
Well, the board of, you can say, no shirt, no shoes, no service. You're not allowed to be in the library if you're not wearing shoes. You're not allowed to be in the library if you're not wearing a shirt and there are Board of Health. a shirt and there are board of health reasons that that's a rule. So I, I have to feel, I feel like this falls in line with that.
Well, I know you do, but our board of health apparently doesn't.
Right. That's the issue.
Forgive me. I mean, you know, I, you're, you're speaking like a smart, intelligent, well-read person. We're dealing with something else here. And I'm not saying they're not intelligent or well-read. All I'm saying is they have a different point of view about how they handle this.
Maybe they could be convinced.
Jean, was there any discussion about why they don't, we shouldn't encourage request this? I mean, or was it just? No, you can't do that.
As, the response was because I think I said, you know, well, well, we can encourage, you know, I realize we can't mandate it, but we can encourage mask wearing for unvaccinated people and in the children's room. And they said, no, we can't even encourage as a municipal building. So I took that to mean with taxpayer-funded buildings, we can't tell people what to do. As opposed to somebody with a shop in Newbury Port, who if they don't want people unmasked in there, can put on a suit. And again, that's why I'm sorry to keep bringing in another library, but that's why I found the Carlisle messaging refreshing because they were being told, you can, you, just like Erin said, you know.
Tell people all the time.
No, you know, shoes required, shirts required.
Okay.
All right. Send us the bullet points and we'll figure out.
Who wants to talk, who wants to talk to John?
I think it can't be three, right? Three makes it a public meeting.
Right.
It'll only be two of us. So let's figure out, we can figure out who those two might be. I'm willing to help Paul in the argument, even if I'm not the one to attend, if you feel it's better otherwise.
You know, and is he the one that we really should be talking to?
I, I get that sense, yeah. He ran the meeting the other day. He, he pretty much had given all the thought to it. Now.
So I, in, in preparation going forward, if the position remains the same, you have to start formulating how we're going to do business. You know, they may, they may listen, they may not listen, and they may just say, no, this is, this is the way it's going to be. So, but I'd be prepared to have a, you know, a way of operating given that.
But I, I would advise separately that all library staff should mask and should double mask most likely. Unfortunately. But I think, you know, and you can be a visible statement of how you think things should be. And you're not advising, but you are modeling.
Right.
And
Margaret, do you have to, the teachers still have to wear masks?
Oh, yes. I have to wear a mask outside at recess.
Okay.
When my students are unmasked.
Yeah.
And I am fully vaccinated and have been since early March. So that's my perspective. But I don't think I would be, well, I might just, anyway, oh, I'll stop. Right there.
You might not be the one to be in the argument.
Precisely. I'm sure you already figured that, but I just I know, Jean, you want my perspective and I'm happy to like include a bullet point. You can refer to me, but I do not think I would be a productive person in that team.
It might be on Zoom.
I might say something.
It might be on Zoom, so you wouldn't be able to leap across the table.
Oh, that's good. But then it would be recorded and that might be, that might be bad thing.
We're gonna try to work this out as best we can, but you know.
Thank you.
You know, in Chief Lucy's email to Jean, there's a little wiggle room. You can't mandate them on, you can't mandate them off. But if parents choose to mask the kids, that's their prerogative. Well, exercise your prerogative, parents, mask them up.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and that's, yeah. You hope, you hope that they do that before they enter the library. Or come to the library with the intention of doing that. And if they don't, how do we encourage, not to use the word encourage, advise them to?
Either. We're stating the circumstances of life.
Yeah, yeah.
Choose, choose health, choose masks.
No, no, absolutely.
We might be able to have some signage using the exact language that we just got that says masks are optional. So, which, which implies the possibility of wearing one as opposed to advising to wear one. I mean, I, I'm trying to figure out how to get more people wearing masks, you know, and I was going to say, there are times when I go someplace these days, in the last few weeks, where I'm debating where to wear a mask and if I see people wearing masks, I put mine on. You know, and I'm, I'm a sheep that way. It's not logic that's happening, it's just probability. So I do think that, that modeling behavior, you know.
Yeah. But I, I would just say that I interpret as masks optional, at least right now in this current climate, as no masks.
Ain't gonna wear it.
Exactly. Oh, mask optional? Fabulous. Get this thing off my face. I've been wearing it for 15 months.
It's like a beach which says.
I think that could actually send a worse message than not putting, not being able to put anything up at all.
I wanted to look at the exact language, but anyway.
One of the most important things I think is that libraries in the whole world are one of the most trusted resources for truthful information. It's our job, we deal in information. Of all the places to not have information about the CDC guidelines posted. I mean, okay, hospitals need it, but I mean, a library, people trust libraries. They trust them more than the news. They trust libraries more than, than most places you could get information and to not have that information to me makes us you know, a little untrustworthy.
So is the state following CDC or is it branching aside from it, Erin?
Sorry, say that again?
Is Massachusetts following CDC guidance or branching away from it?
Well, they, they, they put off their messaging about masks until May 29th, which is another reason why everybody's so twisted right now. They don't, they, you know, they, they basically said mandates are going away, emergency is being lifted, but on the DPH site, it says mandating will be issued in or around May 29th for about masks.
So it really doesn't help us plan.
And I, you know, I, when I read that, I assumed, all right, well, that must mean they're going to somehow you know, make a nod to the CDC guidelines. Which haven't changed.
Right.
And the CDC is still recommending that the children under 11, two, between two and 11, wear masks.
They say, and
Indoors.
Indoors.
Whoever you are, if you're unvaccinated, wear a mask. And if you've only had one of the two dose vaccines, wear a mask. And they, they say that explicitly.
All right. What's the next step? Bullet points. Bullet points.
Working on those right now.
Yeah, Katie, you and I and Erin can go over this.
See what I'm holding up?
Yes.
I'm sure his mommy would be proud.
I'm sure Dr. Fauci would agree with us. Well, I should speak for myself with me. Anyway.
Yeah, and you know, Katie's perfectly willing, I know Katie, she's perfectly willing to get thrown under the bus. So if you want to say, librarian gave me this bulleted thing, you know, so much stuff she wants, but I really just want these two things, you know, whatever.
Well, I think, if we, if we have the CDC guidelines and we had, you know, I'm curious that libraries don't, the children's rooms and library don't fall into the same structures at school. And, and you know, is that just an interpretation? Town by town, it must be compared to
It is, it is.
Compared to a law. So I think that's an error, but we need to have the data in front of us. So having the CDC you know, data and having the, our own particular bullet point will give us an argument we can have that that at least presents information as intelligently as possible as opposed to we just want to, you know. All right, I suggest unless we, I have nothing more to say in this, I probably should have had something left.
I'll get the bullet points written up tonight and I'll send them over to Erin this, this evening so that that way we can send them to you guys first thing tomorrow morning.
Well, I'd like us to send them to me, too.
Okay.
Yeah. How receptive is Lucy to Katie, do you think, Jean?
I don't, I think he'd be receptive. I'm sure it depends on his schedule.
Okay.
I mean, and you could probably meet in person, especially if you did it outside. May 29th yet. Which might be optimal.
Okay. Start with the bullet points.
Yes.
Anything else on that? Okay. Next on the agenda.
Yeah, I think we, that, that was a long, long haul there and I, I think we can probably leave off some that's on here. Depending on how you feel, the interim schedule could be a little bit controversial, too. So I don't know, maybe you want to.
No, let's, of course I had.
I will say goodnight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're leaving. I thought you were raising our attention.
No, say goodbye.
Bye-bye. Good night.
Let's, let's discuss, I don't know if you want to discuss the interim schedule, let's discuss that, so.
Well, basically, where I'm at, so this is an FY budget, budget FY22 thing. The more I thought about it and spoke with, with Erin as well, I think, I really would like the, the way forward to be about keeping this schedule until we get the position we've been asking for, for all these years. As you know, it seems like pretty much every other department has finally gotten their admin assistant with the exception of the library. And going back to two nine-hour days with the staff that we have that has been through a tough year and still continues to have more and more and more on their plates as libraries continue to grow. And now we're entering another, another stage here where we're gonna our workflows may be, you know, turned upside down again, and there's going to be a lot of marketing, a lot of outreach. The long-range plan is coming up. If, you know, with your approval, I would real, I'm not, this is not some sort of punitive thing. It's just as part of our FY23 budget request, we point out that we will stay open two nights a week again if we get this new position because that will enable us to. Having staff do two nine-hour days a week, I was, as I've said, I was never comfortable with. And I really don't want to go back to that. So that's.
So you're talking about keeping the schedule that's kind of what Margaret read off in the, in the minutes. Right? Okay. And the only, and the only way that would change is if there was an increase in the budget.
Increase in the budget and increase in staff.
Okay, well, right. One equaling the other. I think the only way that's going to happen is if we make a concerted effort to educate people external to library. As Erin was saying, people don't come in there and see that there's 50 kids in there for a children's event or program, whatever.
Just, we're just getting huge thunderstorms, just so you know, in case I have to zip off.
Okay. So that means it's coming this way.
Yeah, probably.
So I, I think we should utilize FY22 as, as a means of identifying a, a process of how we go about making people aware of what you do at the library. As I, as I said before, they see you as a town department, just don't happen to be located in town. That's it. You're a town, you're a town employees, you're a town function, and that's it. It's more than that, I understand that. What you do is different than what happens in town. How do you educate people? And that's what we need to figure, we've got to come up with a program, something we can do and figure out who we actually ought to, and try to sell this. I mean, and not wait until budget season. You know, so that's my thoughts on it. If you want to discuss that further in a future meeting, I think we should spend some time thinking about how we go about you know, marketing, not only marketing to, to the, to the citizens, but the leadership. You know? They have an understanding, they have an understanding of what it is that you do. You know?
I agree. And there's an example of, of the more work that is on our, our plate.
Absolutely.
I'm not trying to be whiny or anything, but it's
Okay, well, I mean, but it comes down to survival and growth and improving the product that you're, you're offering. In order to do that, we talked about this for years. Doing is trying to figure out how to make the library important to more people. One of the things that happened is when Barbara Rogers was complaining that we had too many children's programming, we focused on more adult programming and you've got much more, more adults engaged and involved in the library. And incrementally, that was improving at the oversight. So we're going to make people aware of that. Now, what goes on here? It's not just about books on the shelves, right? It's a lot of warehouse. There's things that take place there. We want to let people know what that is. And we talked about Aaron's stats. Now, if they can be tailored to somebody who isn't familiar with the library and that's sent to the selectmen on a, on a monthly basis so that they see this, you know? To the finance committee, anybody that is a decision maker. And if, if we don't do that, it's, the onus is on us. They don't come there. They don't see what you're doing. So, all right. Nothing to say. Been in the house too long.
That's where we left off when COVID hit. We were gonna start, I had just started kind of those flyers with statistics and things that we were gonna go into the monthly meetings at town hall and kind of educating them on our processes.
That's, this is probably, you know, again, Jean is clearly indicated, it's putting more work on the plate. But in order for the, for the, this operation to change and grow, it's got to happen. You know, and I guess we can, we can help out however we can. You know? Not sure what that is at this point, but I think we'll, we'll identify that as we're going forward and become advocates for what needs to be done. So let's work on that going forward if you're all in agreement. Now, I'm speaking as one voice. Now, so you all have you speak up if you, if you feel differently about this.
Well, to Jean's point, to give an example, when I am working on these things and it does take a tremendous amount of time, that means I'm not helping out, sir. That means not able to be that part of the library, which we desperately need for operation.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But that's how it impacts a workflow.
Yep. And it, and it, you know, stuff doesn't happen by magic. Obviously, it's, it's, it's an effort on the part of, of the staff to have these things happen. And I think that's the message we have to start bringing out and having people be aware of it, you know? Ask people, you like, you like what the library does? You like getting books, movies, pictures, whatever it is, take pans? You know, or going to meeting, to, to programs, all of those things. Takes time and effort to put that together and it takes people. You know, and in order to get those people, you need to hire people, you need to pay them. You know? It's crazy, but that's what we need to, what I set as a goal for, for next. It's crazy, but that's what we need to, always set as a goal for, for next fiscal year. All right, anything else, Jean, you want to talk about?
Um.
And I'll get out, or when I won't talk, please. Maybe not.
Well, so the next thing on there was the Amazon and, and the credit stuff that, that you and I and Aaron talked about recently, so we can definitely table that. We gotta pick our battles right now.
Yeah.
I think.
You know, and I, and I think it's, again, it all comes down to having dialogue and discussion. I mean, it's, it's making ourselves more, more available at Town Hall. And I know you haven't been able to do that during COVID, that's, but I think if we increase. Whoever going down there and increasing the visibility and the connection. Once you start making, you know, personal connections with people, things, you know, are different. If we all work in little silos, and there's limited cross interaction, that makes it more difficult.
And I think, you know, Dick, to piggyback on top of that. You know, I think a, a, a really strong. Way to move forward is to make sure that. We meet, we meet with more than just the town administrator at budget request time, to make sure that we meet with FinCom. You know, that year that, that you were away and Alex and Dick and I did our little dog and pony thing. You know, I think I've told this story that when we left the room, because of course it was televised. The head of FinComs said, was there an ask in there? So, you know, we had done all these things, singing all our praises and everything. But I, I took away from that, that if we had just sat there and said, here's what we need. And here's how we need it, we might have gotten it.
Well, he might have said that, but the truth is, we did ask, I mean, we argued within that conversation about adding another body to the library staff. That was part of our, that was part of our discussion, so we didn't leak, we may not have framed it as successfully as we.
Oh, yes, I'm not trying to find fault with anybody, I'm just saying.
No, no, what I'm saying is.
Numbers, you know, we, we should sit there with numbers with them, not, not, you know, that was great what we did, and I'm glad we did it. But you never get the chance to actually do a presentation or say, you know. I can't say the in other towns, because I'll get in trouble. But everybody is always horrified when they find out that we never even do a budget presentation, that we never, we never get asked to do one. So.
And that's, and that's an administrative decision. Okay, not by us, obviously, by somebody who makes those decisions. And it's, 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 it's a way of. Doing business, and it's a management style. You know, you can talk to a whole host of other people, you'll find out it's probably the same way with them too. It's not, it's not like we're being singled out and treated differently when it comes to that, I think it's happening the same way with other departments.
Yes.
It's, it's, it's a management style, and I think that's what we have to be cognizant of. And broaden the base of understanding about what it is that we do, so it's not just. You know, one or two people, but in fact, it's, you know, a broader base of people, have a clearer understanding of what it is that we do, what we need, in order to do it. Or expansively and, and, and better. Or creatively, so. I think that's something that we can take as a challenge, just what everybody wants. You know, and, and we can work on that in the next fiscal year, you know, and, and, and it is, it's, you know, it's. It's this little bite of the apple all the time, and, you know, in the public sector, I've learned this over almost 50 years. Never get the whole apple or the whole pie at one time, it's a little nibble at a time. Seems frustrating, it is, but it's, it is the way to do it, you just, and. Other thing I've learned also, it's developing relationships. Not only with the patrons, but with the people who make the decisions. And having them become aware of who you are or what it is that you do. The onus is on us too, you know, probably more so on us, because they, they're not gonna come down and watch you. Have a program for 50 kids, and it's just not gonna happen. It comes back on us to be. So.
Yeah, though I do suggest, if we think about it, we could do a program, and, and how your town government works. And, and have a selectman and a board member, you know, just have. Presentation, the people show up at town meetings in a state of complete confusion. So that's one way to get them to come to it. I'm, I'm gonna have to run, guys. There was a, I just wanted to remind you, those who probably don't know, that a week from Thursday, a week from tomorrow. On the third, the Town Library Book Group is discussing Nothing to Declare, and I don't know what the, how the invitations work, but any of you are curious about. My book and how I came to write it, at 5:55.
Yeah, I think it is, it is Zoom, right, Jean? Yeah.
It is.
It is, yeah.
That's next Thursday, you said?
Yeah, six, you know.
Very good, all right, anything else?
No. Was wondering whether we might give a shout out in the minutes to the friends. The Newbury Town Library for their hard effort and great success last Saturday.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point, Alex, yes. Did a great job, yeah.
They did indeed.
It's good to have.
Second point.
Yeah.
Second point, after the plant sale, made my way over to, in Wood Nancy. Over to Newbury Elementary for a brainstorming session. For a Newbury Town Day, tentatively set for the third weekend. In June 2022. And seems to me, the library, well, could be on the one hand, a, a locus, a site. For some activities, and certainly the artists I spoke with this afternoon were anxious to have that occur in, in the. Anderson Room during the, during the Saturday. And secondly, we can probably make ourselves in some fashion visible during that Newbury Town Day. Itself, and also we, third point, I guess, let's think about resuscitating the Town I Remember thing.
Yeah.
That very event, those two events, came up in the course. Of the conversation of the brainstorming over at Newbury Elementary, which was attended about as well as our meetings, I guess. There might have been two dozen folks there, out of, you know, how many, or, or. It might have been as many as, as voted in the, in the May 11 election. So eliciting attention and support across the board can be challenging, no matter what you're trying to do. But anyway, random thoughts.
No, no, good, good points, Alex, and, yeah, I probably should get the, the Town I Remember back. On track, because we had, we had started forming, forming the third session and then. Oh, well, so I guess we can revisit, because I think that was a positive town-wide engagement.
Yeah, but it was mostly byfielders who showed up.
No, it was.
Exactly, as in the Newbury Day planning session.
Yes.
Most of the attendees were out of byfield.
Out of byfield.
Make it out what you will.
There were also some South byfielders there.
Oh, were you there?
Not at the planning meeting, but at the, at the Town I Remember.
Oh, yeah.
Find out.
And Terry made it as well.
Inside byfield itself, so.
So it's.
Anyway, just.
We, we got a lot to do in the next year.
Yeah, hey, Aaron, when you circulate the monthly newsletters, which are terrific, by the way. To how many recipients does our service direct that? Or was it in the statistics and I went over it?
Around 300, maybe?
All right, for mailchimp, for the adult mailchimp, we're at 249. And for the youth mailchimp, we're at 287.
So adding the selectmen to the mailing list, emailing list. Along with Tracy Blaze, along with the FinCom members.
Yep, that's in the works.
Yeah.
It really is, that, that's important to get them, you know. On that, and, and you mentioned the long-term plan, Jean, when do we have to start working on that?
Probably in the fall.
Okay.
Guys, I'm gonna jump, thank you very much.
Okay, all right, take care. Okay. All right, all right, we want to, well, we have to, no, there's still three of us, how about that, we could keep talking, well, but we won't. So why don't we wrap it up, and, you know, Jean, do you need things signed this week?
Yes, we do.
When?
Tomorrow at 10:30 would be great.
Okay, I'll see you tomorrow at 10:30.
Okay.
So we'll formally adjourn at this time, I guess, if everybody's in agreement.
Make a motion.
Motion made and seconded, and it looks like a unanimous vote, we're going to adjourn, okay, and. You don't get hit with those thunderstorms. All right, and I'll see you tomorrow, and we'll get these things resolved. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Yeah, bye.